All right, Tom.
Yep. You've got to make choices sometimes.
Yep.
All right, we'll call the meeting to work here at 5:30, or the committee of the whole, sorry, 5:30. Suzie will call for the council, please.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salvido?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovich?
Here.
And Mayor Moore?
Here. Perry?
Charlie, do I need call order for Lowell Light and Power?
Yes, Lee.
Roll call, Charlie.
Chairman Becher?
Here.
Vice Chair Schrauben?
Here.
Board Member Cadwalader?
Here.
Board Member Ponger?
Here.
And then Board Member Crawford is absent.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Daniel's absence.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda tonight from the council.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Of the board?
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salvido?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovich?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes. Perry?
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. For Lowell Light and Power. And support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
All right. Citizen comment? Citizen? No, all right. All right, so we're meeting here today for a discussion on the line shack property. A couple months ago, I asked for Light and Power's board input because we were at kind of an impasse. And then you guys had prepared that statement for us. So Perry thought it would be a good idea for us to sit down in person and discuss ideas, options, trains of thought, anything like that. So I will turn it over to whoever wants to open. Perry, do you have anything?
So I'll be glad to open. And I've just prepared and bear with me if I get all the way through this. First of all, I consider everyone in this room as friends and friends with different opinions. We're all professionals, we're all professional partners in city government. I basically am speaking on behalf of the ratepayers of Lowell Light and Power. I will be advocating for the sale of the line shack. And again, as we went before, we create, we went two different motions, one to sell that, and then secondly, we made a recommendation. Number one, I don't think it's the, and this is just some opinions, I don't think it's the responsibility of the council to determine what would be going to be built on the property. If it meets the zoning requirement with planning commission, then so be it. I do agree with a timeline from start to finish. A lot of what I might refer to is what I will call water cooler talk and over the, and some of this goes the history of trying to sell this line shack. There was a concern that Lowell Light and Power didn't give a specific endorsement on the second RFP. Well, when the first RFP, the, or excuse me, didn't give a specific endorsement on the second RFP, correct. Well, when the first RFP went out, what we saw in the rough draft had a minimum bid. And when that went out to the general public, there was no minimum bid requirement. So then Lowell Light and Power in one of our meetings made the recommendation to not sell at this time because of, one, COVID and not having a minimum bid. If my recollection, and Cliff and I talked, and council then recommended and voted to sell, but because of a failed incorrect procedure, it then went back to a second RFP. I read that Cliff wanted to go out for a new, a fourth RFP in your article. And my question would be, why would anyone bid more than a hundred thousand? The council accepted a, and it was the only bid, a seventy-seven thousand dollar bid. And then in RFP two, they accepted one hundred thousand dollar bid. And then they recommended the one hundred thousand bid in RFP three. These were all the lowest bid. I know it's not a requirement to take the highest bid when selling or the lowest bid when buying. But when you have a bid that's one and a half times more than the, than the lowest bid, I question that. And again, that was the Canfield. And Canfield had no contingencies, and we felt that was the least amount of risk. Cliff mentioned in his reason for voting no on a resolution for Main Street Inn that he felt that the new RFP could result in more attractive bids. And I'm paraphrasing, people smarter than him suggest that you should be buying real property in these economic times. I believe that might be true if you can sit on the property and wait until econo, the economy gets better or until building materials come down in price. But the city wants the developer to complete their project in a timely fashion, so that's just my take on it. I've heard that, I've heard the comment from Greg Can, I heard that the comment from Greg Canfield that he sometimes shoots from the hip was not well received. Show me any of the bids that aren't shooting from the hip. Copper Rock came with a completely different proposal from the original when the council went to vote on it. I've heard the concern that Greg was perceived that he might not have the resources to complete a multi-billion dollar project. Again, I don't think that's the responsibility of the council. Parking came up as a deterrent to the Copper Rock proposal along with height. Yes, parking is going to be a concern with any of the projects. The Inn is, I don't know if it's currently, but at one time it was, had seventy-seven percent occupancy. So my point being is that there, it's not going to be full there's a hundred percent of the time. Whereas in apartments, you are going to have, parking I think is more permanent now, whether, I, we can all argue that or not. Marty, you had mentioned that you hope that when you came to developing your property, that, that parking doesn't, isn't a problem. And I would, I wholeheartedly would endorse you to develop that and because it's an existing building that's there. I think Copper Rock is a good company and does great work with a beautiful end product. If they, if their bid was within five to ten percent of the highest bid, I think we, when we're going through this process, I think, one, we have to weigh out all the factors. And factors being the bid, the amount, the, whether there's contingencies, non-conformity, parking, whether there's the risk, and I just think all those things need to be measured. And I think that's why Lowell Light and Power came back with the recommendation to sell it to Greg Canfield because they felt that it was, it was a bid that was fifty thousand dollars more than what you had looked at for the Copper Rock. And they felt that parking was the, one of the, not as big a factor as in some of the other ones. And also the risk factor, felt that there wasn't as much risk with that. And I'll let Charlie or anybody can address those things, but that's where I'm coming from. And I think pretty much what the board is coming from, and I'll let the board speak for themselves.
Perry?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, you know, I think we all know this, but it's a good time to be reminded of it, is that we are here to do the people's work, our ratepayers, our taxpayers' work. So I want us to, as we engage, resist the urge to be adversarial. And instead, when we have that urge, try to ask further questions to understand each other's points of view. I hope we at least come out of this, at worst, we're all a little bit unhappy. But of course, at best, we come out of here with a solution that we're all happy with. The win that comes out of here today is for the people of Lowell, our ratepayers, our taxpayers, and not in any single one of us.
I want this off our back. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of looking at a building over there that's almost falling into the river. And it's embarrassing when I'm sitting on the pontoon boat looking at that white box block with, did we fill that hole? Boomer truck hit it? But I'm just, it's just an eyesore. And Greg came to the table with a chunk of money. And personally, he's done great things to put all these buildings around here. I like what he's done. When the housing dump happened, yes, he bought up some houses. There were some snarky people going, well, what is he gonna do? Is he gonna own Lowell? Well, this is Tina Town in the United States. And Greg Canfield and other people who've been and did buy some houses, but they helped stop Moore from looking like a plant. And everybody else was afraid to buy him off. He did it. He helped us out. Because we were really on the brink of looking pretty shabby. My vote is, let's, let's sell this to the guy.
I do like Tina Town, but we all work on that. Two Ts?
Yes, Cliff, pro, yeah, speaking from a light power perspective, I make my concern is that we get this resolved, you know, and in particular that we don't, I guess, create a the impression that the city is just difficult to work with, you know. Whether, when I say the city, I mean, you know, Light and Power and the city itself. But I'm kind of frustrating in this whole process because I can't remember how many RFPs we even have, you know. But if it takes that much to sell one building, I mean, what are we doing wrong? There's, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take this much to get through it, and it's just gonna, I don't want the whole become a place where the people expect dealing with the city has always has to be a messy process because the last two now have been messy. I just, we need to kind of find a way just to say, look, we had an RFP up there. We've got some valid bids. Let's take one and move on. If it was private property, we wouldn't have any say in terms of what's gonna go there. We have rezoning, right? That's what is supposed to kind of protect the city's long-term master plan, so I think that's a big, big concern though. And parking's a bigger problem than any one particular building down here, so parking just needs to get resolved as a separate issue, you know. It's, you know, you ought to consider it, factor it, but until we actually have a plan for that, what can we really do here, you know, so. That said, you know, I think that you asked council, you know, I used to be on the council, so I know that it's very tempting to want to care about a lot of the details, and I think that's a good thing. And I think it's good to even guide, try to want to guide, but you also have to recognize, and even from the Light and Power standpoint, we kind of had to recognize that we have a lot of opinions of what we'd like to see there. It doesn't really matter. You know, what matters is that we take care of this building, get it sold, get the value out of it that we can move on to other light power business. From the city perspective, same thing. Let's get a transaction through, get development moving in the city. And just keep going from there. But I think we definitely need to just keep with the, the RFP that we have out. We have some valid applicants. We need to take one of them and move on. If we're just gonna keep restarting the process over and over, it must be a point people getting. Or Perry mentioned, they're just gonna keep bidding a little bit until someone finally just gets tired of it next action. And that's not good for the city either, so. That's, that's my main concern. I just want to keep it efficient, moving it forward and doing it. And even getting this process ironed out for the next time, whenever this may happen.
Leah?
I agree. I think that we have an opportunity with a company doing some great work. Obviously, everybody's aware of who I voted for and who I have not voted for. I think for me, we had a good offer on the table. We had a company who was willing to make adjustments for the vision of our town. I think we've lost a really great opportunity. And I think now we're sitting in a place where it's like, take this good offer because it was a lot of money or more than we were asking. And I think that, that shows our inability to make good choices, personally.
Well, since Perry referred to me numerous times in his notes, feels somewhat picked upon. Actually, something Perry raised the other day and repeated here again. I regret changing my vote at our last meeting because of the response of the people that were in the room because I realized that what I was doing was trying to play the job of the planning commission, and that's what their complaints were, should have been directed to the planning commission, not us. It's not our job to decide whether something can be four stories high, three stories high, twenty-seven feet long, a hundred and ten feet tall, whatever. That's not our job. Our job is to say, this looks like the best sale option. To repeat my decision on both of the RFPs I made because I thought they were the most lucrative for the city of Lowell and Light and Power in the long run. That's why the first time around, I voted for something that had a combination of retail and residential so that there were more consistent, you know. One of the, well, several of our things have just been a, a one business, one electric meter deal. Those didn't even get on my radar when I compared them with something that would have multiple electrical consumers and/or residents that would benefit Lowell. Because we can't expand anywhere. We don't, it's not like our city's growing like the township. We can't put in new houses. So in my mind, that was the most financially smart thing to do for the long haul. Again, I wish I hadn't changed my vote. I felt I was doing the right thing by listening to the people. But the process, I think, sucks because Greg knew how the process went. Copper Rock was not fully cognizant. Is that their problem? Yeah. They had no idea. They were kind of blindsided at the meeting. They didn't have an opportunity to go gin up support because there is support in the city for a multi-story, multifamily dwelling. It's not, it's not without its supporters. And that's why my response a couple weeks ago is we should start back from ground zero. And I feel even more definite about that right now because I realize that that meeting turned into a planning commission meeting instead of who do we sell this building to? And I know I'm probably gonna get spit on and have things drawn on my house when I go home. That's kind of where I'm at.
Halloween. I, I had my house hang.
I said I was sorry. I was just mad.
Jim?
Oh, I'll agree with what they're saying. I personally did not do my job when we came to vote on this. And I'll take full responsibility. I was more apt to looking at what the end result was going to be put on that property other than doing what the RFP said. RFP strictly said, sell the property. It didn't say to go ahead and, and make decisions on the building, parking, anything like that part of it. And I think we have, like Cliff said, we have really good planning commissions. We got a great Andy Moore that can do variance. Then bring that, that is when I needed to get back into it and make a vote of whether or not we would approve on any one of those particular opportunities that arose with that part of it. So, so I'm back here tonight to, to, or at least consider, how do we sell the building? That, that is our objective here. The rest can go back to Marty and his team on planning and Bruce, and they'll bring their results back to us. So that's what I got.
Marty?
I've got a couple things. And it's comments about light boards, kind of. Greg, I don't see where the taxpayers benefit in the sale of that. I do see where the ratepayers do the benefit. I don't see them getting money-wise. I do see something coming off the book that can potentially cost Light and Power money to stop a different project, to take care of that issue. That I do understand, but as far as taxpayers, I don't think they, they're not gonna receive it.
Well, I, it's not necessarily a monetary thing I'm talking about. I think it's just in terms of just efficiently doing the business for the people.
Okay.
Is, was my point.
Tina, your comment. I know you didn't mean it to take, put it that way, but I took it as,
What?
You want Greg to have it because you just felt he deserves it.
He's done great things.
Yes. And I'm not gonna deny that, but I think that was what you were,
Yeah, I'm sick of this.
Yep.
Yeah, let's salvage while before it falls in the river and we have to dig it out.
I agree with Leah. We had a proposal that was gonna do lots of different things. It doesn't mean the one that we currently agreed on at council, and it's gonna sit for twenty days. Can't do the same. I think it is a loss of income for Light and Power. No matter how you put it, it's a, it's a loss to the, to the water, the tax base to the, to the city as far as doing individual, if they were condos or whatever. Cliff? I was kind of shocked when you went the other way, but I did understand at the time, and I still do. And I'm not opposed to seeing another, put this thing back out for bid another time because I just think that to come to a good conclusion, you need, we just need to look at all the options with a clear vision. We can't be predetermined or preconceived of the person, the company, the size, the parking, the trash, all of that. I just think that it needs to just have a clear focus like Jim said. And do what, just do what we were asked to do and let planning, let the board I sit on and planning commission take care of the rest of it.
Okay. I have a few things. I took a little bit of issue with what you said about being difficult to work with. When the first RFP, the administrative era, was completely our fault. We ended up getting more bids on the second RFP and selected a project we thought would work. That project falling apart has nothing to do with us being difficult to work with. That project fell apart because of the development, for the developer. So I take a little bit of issue with that. I did not vote for Copper Rock either time because they were in my top three because we had to pick three, right? And I didn't think the bottom ones were as viable as the top ones.
Well, you didn't indicate that the evening that we voted, what order yours were. And the rest of us all said one, two, three. You just said, these are my top three.
Yes. Because we were doing a total. We weren't doing points based on ranking. We were just doing a total of how many people had them on their list.
Right.
So if it would have been like five points for first, three and two, I would have given an order.
We just took everybody's top three.
Yeah.
And then?
Yeah. But I have a one and a Y, very good thought. I think a continuation of a business that brings people to downtown to spend money is a good thing. I do understand the need for housing, and I'm glad that so many people want to live here. And I think most of the downtown business owners probably tell you weekend parking problems are pretty good problems to have, right? Because it means people are here and not somewhere else. So I don't want to see a longstanding relationship that made it through a biodigester and internet security fall apart because of, what'd you call it, a white blob? Yeah, I don't want to see it undone because of a white blob.
You're talking the relationship between the city council and
And the Light and Power.
Light and Power board. Okay. Just making sure.
Because the biodigester was a pretty contentious issue, and we seemed to come together.
And that was pretty much Charlie's fault?
Hundred percent.
That's, that's my recollection.
Good, good for Simon.
Perry did try to talk you out of it. His sentence was to come back here and yell white blob.
Do what I can.
But I think going out, I don't know. I think going out for another RFP would be an idea if there wasn't other viable proposals. But to start from scratch on their viable proposals means we only gave one of the people who took the time to submit to the RFP, we only gave one of those people a shot to get their votes. So. So I've, no, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm done. I don't.
So I, to, back to Marty and Cliff. I would, I don't think there's any necessarily proven science behind this, my statement. Usually there isn't, so. I would, until it actually, whatever happens, until it happens, I'm not sure that apartments, those sized apartments and everything, certainly it would increase the tax base, I believe, whether it be apartments, condos, everything. I'm not sure if it would increase the amount of revenue to Lowell Light and Power. And what I say by that is, is typical, it depends on who you get in there, but when I, when I look at the apartments, the Riverview, a lot of people that have bought into those are vacate, are there for five months, six months out of the year, then they're vacationing in Florida. I see that, that those size of apartments and everything are typically purchased by, by retirees that want to do different things. So they're downsizing from the size of their home because they don't want to have the upkeep and everything else. And they're going and vacationing or spending five months, six months out of the year in Florida or Arizona or whatever. So again, I'm not sure that having that then increases the amount of, of revenue to Lowell Light and Power.
So six meters are not better than one?
No. I can, I can clarify. So I, I've, Please. I've said this a couple times, but regardless of what goes there, the additional electric load is gonna be immaterial to our finances, period. There's not going to be a big enough electric load that it may, between one proposal and the next. I can tell you what is better than what's there now, is anything. I mean, I hate to,
Listen to grow up.
But really, I, I mean, if you look at, I'll bring the numbers a couple different ways. It's not going to significantly or materially change the pilot payment that the city receives. It's not going to significantly change any revenue, even down to a class. I mean, our, our revenue from our residential class is two point five million dollars a year, three million. I mean, our revenue from our residential class is $2.5 million a year, $3 million a year, something like that. You put 16 apartments in there, they're gonna be small apartments. Average electric bill's gonna be less than $100 a month. Of that, about 60% is going to be to our purchase power expenses. So of that $100 a month, maybe 40 of it actually goes into our pocket for operating, operating revenue. With that, we have, any service, we're going to have a cost to serve. So it's not just money in the bank for us. There's no transformer serving that. We will, our policy in what we're willing to contribute to a new service basically looks at what seven years' worth of margin would be. So regardless of what we're looking at, for the next seven years, we're essentially gonna be recovering our investment. Plus, plus recovering our cost to serve that customer. So for approximately seven years, depending on how you carve up the dollars, you know, you can allocate one dollar, one dollar in isn't necessary, it all goes into one pool. But in the grand scheme of things, it's a long-term investment, just like everything that we do is a long-term investment. We hope that you'll.
I wish I had known this a couple of RFPs ago. Cause I've been operating, seriously, I'm not being, I'm not joking. In my mind, eight meters is better than two.
And I think that's fair, but I, if I didn't make it clear, I know I've stated it to the council. I know I've stated it to the council that, you know.
It didn't remind me.
Regardless of, that shouldn't be such a weighty factor that it changes a decision you guys have to make. Because there are larger impacts that will be realized through some other piece of that investment, whether that's tax revenue or support to the local merchants, whatever the case may be. The other factors being weighed are going to weigh heavier than additional revenue to us. The biggest win for us is our customers have paid for that building and have equity tied up in that building. And there needs to be a path for them to realize that equity. Cause ultimately, right now, our customers are carrying the liability so that the city can control the development, which we've also stated happily part of and would like to work with the city. But there needs to be an in, an into that as well. And that's also one of the reasons that the light and power board, I think, chose to pass two recommendations for city council. One was the urgency to sell now and the other was in support of Mr. Canfield's proposal. Ultimately, both of them are about getting the liability off of our books and allowing our customers to realize the equity that they put into that building. I can say, you know, we're looking at rate increase in January. If there's no path to selling line shack, the revenue requirement will be $100,000 higher. So we, we counted on these funds. We will be, you know, to give you an idea, the last couple of rate increases that we've done have equated to, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, about a quarter of a million dollars a year. So this is half of an annual rate increase potentially.
And that's due to market forces.
Yeah. And this year's rate increase, we don't know exactly where it's gonna be. It needs to be more substantial than that. We saw a 23% increase year over year in our purchase power expense, which is our single biggest expense. A million dollars of budget oversights last year. And we're looking at a very similar story this year. Financially, we have cash reserves in place and we plan for these things. But I can say that we are not pushing it to the end, but if there's no path to receiving funds for this, we do need to make up those funds through, through, you know, our rate-making ability.
So there's a rate hike coming regardless of what happens to the line shack?
Yes. But if there's no path to selling line shack, we will have to evaluate recovering those additional funds.
What does that, I mean, what kind of pressure are you putting on me here?
There's no pressure. I'm just saying that there's.
Or yeah, there's pressure. You're telling me you need to make a decision tonight because we've got a rate hike coming.
You can't make a decision.
No, there is no decision you can make. I'm just saying if there is no path, if it doesn't look like we need to look at making up this, this, the proceeds from the sale. That's one of the reasons that there was two motions passed. One being that in urgency to sell the project now, one being for, you know, economic conditions. You know, we're watching rate, interest rates go through the roof and there's quite a bit of interest right now in the property. And the other is, you know, looking at our revenue requirements, there will be approximately a $100,000 shortfall in revenue requirements that we are gonna have to evaluate. Do we wanna make up that, that balance if there's no path to the project?
What does that translate to each ratepayer?
That's where I was trying to get.
That's about a percent and a half. It's about a half, it's about a half of an annual rate increase.
Dollar-wise?
Uh, depending on what class. I mean.
To a homeowner?
I have to do the math.
Well, if your bill's a hundred bucks, it's a dollar and a half. Have you done any number crunching as to what it would cost if that building had to come down? Like if you wanted to turn it into a parking lot?
I have not.
You're probably looking, based on my experience, probably 20, 30 grand. Something about right. That's what, you know, we've demoed some houses in the past and that stuff, but not much, not much smaller than that.
Keeping guts, demo, clean up and laying pavement for a parking lot.
I, well, just, yeah, you would just basically put grass, yeah.
And make sure that the DNR is not unhappy. Because it adds a city in the river.
Right.
So that's a, that's a real big liability.
I don't know what it costs. And Greg, you might. So when they demoed the building next to where the new restaurant is going in, whatever, the Slagel's Restaurant.
Okay.
There was a building there before you, there was a building there that was demoed. The river had to be drained, was drained for over, it was 30 days or so, had to be drained. Then they, because there's some muscle, they had to, they had to bring the water back up to a level. Then they, then later bring it back down. And again, I don't know that, but that's on the river. I'm gonna assume that, that there's gonna. If you're, if you're saying that a normal demo of a house is 20, 30,000.
Yeah, you know, I didn't think of those things, but.
I'm gonna say that you, my guess is because of the river situation, you can probably double that.
Yeah, probably not unreasonable.
Were, were you heading, Leah, to the conclusion that maybe the city should buy it and turn it into more parking? Is that what you were thinking?
No. No, that would not be my first choice. My first choice would have, um, here's what I think. I, I forget who said it, but we were talking about the relationship between low light and power and the city. And I, I have no will towards low light and power. Personally, I am frustrated with my fellow council members because I think that we have failed the system that was set up for us. And not just one of us or all of, all of us, just collectively. I think we've gone through this process one too many times. I can, I can sit here and tell you what my personal feelings are on all the proposals we saw. But what I can say is, I think we're still sitting here talking about, you know, is six, eight meters, is that better for the city? Or is it better for doing a hotel? Or is it better for parking? And I think we're still talking about the logistics that are not really up for debate. Debate is, who came to the table with the best proposal? Who did we mostly all agree on? And who presented a plan that we all felt comfortable moving forward with? And I think that just somewhere in the process of those discussions, we got lost in what our responsibility to the city was. So that's where I still sit.
And so Matt, I'm gonna ask, so you feel like $50,000, the amount doesn't have any, doesn't have, doesn't play any role in this?
Currently?
Yeah.
Today? No, not for me, no, it doesn't.
So.
So of, of course, of course, money's money, right? Of course we want more money. But for me, my job isn't to look and say, "How can I make the most money?" That's not my job. That's not why I was elected. That's not why people elect me or come to me with questions or share their opinion with me. My job was not to sit at the table and say, "Who's got the best proposal and the most money to put down towards it?" That wasn't my job.
I would beg, so that's where you and I will differ. Cause I think that is your job.
To make the most money for the city.
Not necessarily the most, but when it's, but when it's one and a half times difference, I think that's a sizable amount.
I think it's, I just think the disagreement is you're giving the money, we're not. So we're looking at it completely differently. You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying you, any person.
But you are, so. One of the biggest assets to the city of Lowell is low light and power. And lieu of taxes and everything else. Our ratepayers had, you're basically saying our ratepayers, $50,000 doesn't mean anything to them.
No, 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 I never said that.
Well, but that's, but that's, that's what I'm, that's the feeling that I'm getting from.
Well, let me clarify.
Okay.
You're more focused on the bid price because you have to apply the money properly. We're focused more on the best proposal for the city as a whole.
And I would, and as I said, I think if it's, again, within a few thousand dollars, I, I, but when, when it's that amount difference, I think it's the responsibility of the council. And I guess I'm looking at, not just for this, but I'm looking at all aspects. That when you're looking at, at different items, what streets cost, what everything. I don't think, I don't think it's the responsibility of the city to, to continually take, to cost your, to cost money. Your job is to, is to save the taxpayers of Lowell and ratepayers money. And when it, when it becomes, for me, when it becomes 1.5% difference, I think that's, I think that is something that you have to consider.
Oh, I agree that we did consider, but it can't be, to me, it's not the determining factor. Right? We're getting, any of the proposals get that liability off your books, right? Any of the six. Any of the six provide you with cash in hand that you didn't have prior to the sale, correct? Any of the six beautify the area that people associated with light power, correct? So there's multitude of factors, that's all I'm saying.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying.
You can take 150 grand.
And I'm saying, when I was looking at it, again, the bits, I'm looking at different risk factors.
Yes.
Again, Copper Rock, great company. I love what I've, what I've seen and everything. But at the same time, in their proposal was listed contingencies. When all of a sudden, there's contingencies.
But they also went on the record and said if the contingencies didn't happen, it would still happen. Cause that was one of the questions we asked everybody. Is, is your, is your project dependent? Because we got burned by the last one that we said, "Hey, let's do this." And he said, "Yeah." And then he said, "Can't." So we ask all of them.
I'm sorry. So then maybe it's, maybe it.
Well, they did take.
Maybe it does need to go out for a new RFP because I'm going by what is written. And what is written in their proposal is contingencies.
But I can appreciate and have more respect when a company says, "These are the contingencies that we're looking at," and they are black and white, in type, versus a person, when you ask a question, says he shoots from the hip. That's not how I view this process.
Do you wanna give us a layout of where we're at in the process overall?
Sure. Everybody's coming with feedback for now. Just a reminder, so the city council passed the first resolution last time. There's a resolution sitting with Sue for 20 days. And then it'll come back to you and you'll need four votes for it to pass. So just a reminder, your charter is the document that puts you in this awkward position. And it's hard to change it or you probably wouldn't by now. But really, all your charter requires is this two-step resolution process, the 20 days sitting on Sue's desk, and the four votes the second time around. All of this other considerations that you're doing, you just can, you know, we don't need to do all.
And the RFP simply says, "We have the right to reserve, reject, accept any bid we still should achieve." I mean, it says it right there.
Yeah, it does. You're right, but you can make it as simple or as complicated as you want, is my point. And it's gotten very complicated. So what you could do is just focus, when it comes back to you, regardless of whether you go out and do the whole new RFP and stretch over or just keep moving forward with the second one, with the second resolution, just focus on some objective criteria to try to get this thing back on the tax rules. And then let the planning commission do their job.
And it can come November 7th. At least it could've ever came, was November 7th. And the, the 20-day period started on Friday and it'll be able to come on November 7th.
So anyway, and let the development agreement protect you. And let the planning commission do their job. So just, just so you know, I just want you to remember that the only thing the charter says, you're already familiar with, two resolutions, 20 days, four votes the second time. The rest, you've got some leeway if you wanna simplify all of this.
Yeah, but what happens if, on the 7th it comes back and it fails?
It's done, you gotta start over again.
Then we start all over. So then we go back to the pool.
You start all over with 20 days, right? You don't start all over with a new one.
I mean, my goodness. I guess you can keep going deeper down into the RFPs you received, the responses to the RFP you received the first time if you want.
Right.
Or you say, "That's it, we're gonna start over and send out a new one." Either way, you're gonna have to start with that first resolution, another 20 days, another second resolution. Yeah.
I think this gets back to our urgency a little bit and not trying to say, "Hey, if this happens or if it doesn't happen." But the reality is, we're pretty much in the same spot as we were two years ago after the, the first sale fell through. We're in some other iteration of not enough support to sell. Am I allowed to make a comment?
Yeah. Some agenda there.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm a little bit of public enemy number one with a couple of people. As far as, I said, I'm the seat-of-the-pants guy. With my 40 years of construction experience and my contacts, I try to be humble, but I have the assets to complete this project. At Spring Grove Variety Building, ran into an unexpected event there that I had to buy $25,000 worth of floor joists and flooring in there and still completed that project in a year. Few other people said that they would've walked away from it at that point, but I stuck it up and got it done. I got a, a nice building there that's an asset to Lowell. I'm not sure that we'll have the same tenant forever there. It's kind of a ghost town in there from what I've seen, but it's a nice product that turned out. My first project was the Canfield Plumbing Building that, council has pictures of that. It was covered in pole barn steel and a big piece of steel across the front for a billboard. Removed all of that, had the arches put back on and restored that building. The Moose Building.